Please, the North Syracuse Board of Education is called to order. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We're going to begin with a moment of silence for the following. Susan Loffler, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District, Janice Clark, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District, Denise DeAngelo, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District, and Donna Thompson, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Thank you. Okay, up first, we have a math presentation, so I'm going to invite, I believe it's Nick back there, who I don't think I've met Nick actually, hi. And I'm going to let you take over. Thank you.
First off, thank you so much for allowing me to be here. I actually thought that I would probably present to you guys earlier than 10 months into my tenure here in North Syracuse. However, presenting right after the strategic, strategic whoo, action plan has come out, has really given me a better sense of being able to provide guidance as to where we're going in mathematics. So I'm excited about that. I just kind of want to start by saying some thank yous. When I left my current district or my previous district, it was really hard for me. I had a lot of great relationships and that was a very difficult transition. However, the people in this office, the superintendent and assistant superintendents, as well as the director's unit, principals, math coach, a lot of people helped me along the way, make this that much better of a transition. So I really have them to thank. And I also specifically, I'd kind of like to call out John Wojcik and Greg Stone for the work that they did to make it so that I could step into a position that and do some of the great work that I feel like we've already been able to accomplish. You'll see at the bottom of this slide, it says next steps. Where are we going? Why are we going there? Where are we at and how do we get there? And that's a little bit how this presentation is going to flow and some of the things, the way that we're going to look at it. So where are we going? This first, the very top statement is not a vision that you would think is a shared vision that a bunch of people sat around a table and created. This is my vision. And I don't think, well, I will tell you the very first interaction that I had with Superintendent Bowles, he said, "Look at my back wall." And if you've ever been in his office, you'll see that there's a bunch of charts of New York State math assessments. And he said, "We are 16th out of 21 component districts. That's not good enough in math." And that was my charge on day one. And so it's been my charge in everything that I've done. And that's our, that's where we want to go, to be the most desirable K-12 district in central New York for math instruction, for math opportunities and for math achievement. And that's my driving force behind everything that I think about, everything that I do. The second part of this, though, is the core values. And this is what, one of the maybe most proud things I feel like we've gotten a chance to accomplish. And when I first started with the K-7 math committee, we spent about three committees, or three and a half committees, only focused on core values. We had to define what our foundation was. And you can read them up there. They're, they're simple, but they're straight to the point. We believe all can and will learn. That will provides a little bit of accountability. Everyone, it's easy to say all can learn, but when we say all will learn, it means we have to hold ourselves accountable to will learn. We are continuous problem solvers, math focused thing, but also extends into everything. We value the learning process that if you've had kids who have gone through Common Core, you fully recognize that in mathematics, we really value the thinking that goes behind it. It's not just about getting an answer, but it's about understanding how you're getting there. And the last one, I would probably say is the one I love the most that was not something that came from me, was something that came from the committee, is that we are receptive and value feedback. I'm a big feedback guy. I seek out feedback, both critical and positive feedback. It's how, what drives everything that I do. And it's what I want to try to give to other people. Sometimes that can be met with a little bit of anxiety because if someone hasn't received a lot of positive feedback and they're only receiving negative feedback, that's difficult. So we're receptive and value feedback, I think is an important piece of the work that we're doing. So why are we going there? This, these six different guiding principles are the six principles that NCTM, the National Council of Teachers of Mathematics, say are what produces an effective mathematics program. So those six are teaching and learning. So we have to focus on the teachers, access and equity that we believe all can and will learn. And within, within that specific core value, we're also saying, hey, we, we're going to provide the scaffold so that all can and will learn. Curriculum, tools and technology, assessment and professionalism. And as I've kind of said, all of our students deserve all of these principles functioning at their very highest capacity. And I feel like that's my role and kind of my charge in this position as Director of Mathematics. So that is where we're going, right? And why we're going there because it's what NCTM, the professional organization around mathematics in this country says, "You have those six and you have those six functioning at their highest capacity. That's going to produce the most effective mathematics program." And I'm going to come back and I'm kind of going to kind of refer to those, but we have to first understand where we're at here in North Syracuse. Where are we at? So professional development, teaching and learning. When I had talked to the math teachers in North Syracuse, I asked, "Hey, when was the last time that you had some math, math specific professional development?" And they kind of looked at me and were like, "Well, we've had some, we've had some professional development, but math specific, I'm not really quite sure." And they'd have to go back and even further back. And I had many people saying 15 years or I can't remember the last time that I had math specific professional development at the 512 level. Where are we at with intervention and enrichment? Right now, at, at the 57 level, and even, even up into the eight level with mathematics, we're attempting to fit 150 minute a week program into 70 minutes a week. And that's, that's difficult. That's what we're currently at. Curriculum, curriculum, like I mentioned intentionally, a couple of those individuals at the start of the presentation. At the K-7, we're using Into Math, which is an HMH resource. And we have, I think you could kind of consider this year, the very first year that we have made it all the way through Into, which is really exciting because the very first year of Into was cut short, so we didn't get to finish it. Last year was a very abbreviated section of what we did with the curriculum. And so we're using Into, Into Math. And, and I think teachers are really getting behind it. There was a really cool story that John shared this morning, actually to me, not planning on sharing it here, but a teacher said, "Hey, I was really hesitant about it at first, but it really works." Like if you just do it fully, it, my kids were taken off once I totally bought into it. It was kind of exciting. He was even excited about it because you know, there was a little bit of hesitancy with stepping into a new program right first. At the 812 level, we currently have teacher created materials. So each teacher, sometimes a specific content, you could say algebra or algebra two, have kind of gotten together and created their own stuff. But it is at that level, really completely teacher created, pulling in different resources throughout 812. And then where are we at with data driven instruction? Grades K through four and six give common benchmarks and are currently inputting them into Mastery Connect. We're not doing a ton around the analysis and action of that outside of the individual level. So systematically, we might not necessarily be doing stuff, but teachers are putting some stuff into Mastery Connect, which is our assessment management system. And then five, seven, eight, algebra and algebra two are also giving common benchmarks, but there's not, they're not right now in putting them into Mastery Connect, or at least this year. Again, this is where, where are we at right now? Where are we at with assessments? Again, this is 2018, 19 data because we don't have three through eight assessments with, that are out, the information is not out yet. It'll be out in August. In 2018 and 19, we had 30% of our students who scored a level one out of a four point rubric on the New York State Assessment in grades three through eight. Only 15% of those students scored a level four, which is the highest score that you can score. The Regents Assessment correlates closely to that. 24% were less than 65 and 84% were, I'm sorry, 18% were greater than 84%. That last piece, 18%, is the, the number that we consider college and career ready. And so in 2018, 19, when they took that assessment, there were, now, this is just the one point. So it's not the highest score that they ever got, which obviously kids could retake an assessment and score higher, but on that Regents, that specific time that they took it, only 18% of our kids were considered college and career ready on that assessment. Yeah, please.
So are you talking, talking about the first entry algebra regions?
Those are all three of them.
All three of them.
Algebra, algebra, geometry and algebra two, correct.
Oh, algebra two is what they call trig?
Yeah, they don't call it trig anymore.
No, I mean, I've, I've been, I've been there when it was there, then it was math A V, then it went back to.
They actually put trig in geometry now, but, so there's three regions.
So 18% are proficient for all three of those.
18% of students, no, 18, so 18% of students scored above an 84% on a Regents exam at that time.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. This is very similar to the graph that is on the back wall of the superintendent's office. And I've circled North Syracuse there. If you count them, that is 15 out of 23 bar graphs. Two of those graphs, one of them is the OCM and one of them is the Region. You'll notice both the OCM and the Region are above North Syracuse in mathematics achievement for 38 mathematics achievement in 2018, 19. This is on my wall in my office. It is what drives me. And I think you guys want it to drive me because when I see this, I think, man, why, why do we want to encourage people to move to North Syracuse? Why do we want our community, community to be a place where everyone wants to be? Because if you move to North Syracuse, you're going to start, you're going to do what if you have kids in grade level? You're going to type in greatschools.org. And when you type in greatschools.org, you're going to see what they are on a score out of 10 in North Syracuse. And we, we can do better. We can do a lot better. And that's why the vision that I originally showed you is not just to be farther up, it's to be the best, because that's where we have to hold our standard. Yes, President?
So I don't want to keep interrupting you, but it makes sense to ask you while we're on this graph. So just tell me about proficiency versus a level four. Are we defining proficiency? Is that a?
Yeah.
Three and four together?
Proficiency is three and four together. Yeah. This graph, it doesn't have all the different pieces. Each of these bars represent a, the, the big bar that you see on each of those is proficiency. The, and then it goes four, three, two, one. So it goes four, three, two, one proficiency for each of the different grade levels, if that, if that makes sense.
No, it does. I want to make sure.
Yeah, thank you for asking. No, that's.
Proficiency is three and the threes and fours.
Threes and fours, correct. And just as an FYI, three, in the three through eight assessments, they are scored on a four point rubric. The Regents have scored on a five point rubric. The Regents is level three on the Regents is not actually considered proficient, even though they pass the Regents. So you can get between a 65 and 79 on the Regents, and that is not considered proficient. It just means you pass the Regents. So we have a lot of kids who are scoring a two coming out of eighth grade, but then could still get through the Regents with a 65 or a 70 or something like that. That's not actually considered Regent or proficient, and it's not necessarily considered college and career ready, if that makes sense. That's, that's how the state actually defines it. This is a graph of this year's algebra, a five year comparison, including this year of our Algebra One. I actually have this graph for Algebra One, Geometry and Algebra Two, but I didn't think for this presentation to kind of belabor the point made a ton of sense, but I did want to show it to us because I think it's helpful to look at. I want to kind of key you in on the red with the blue dots. I didn't mean for it to have blue dots. I don't know why it does, but that's all right. The red line is, is the main thing that I want you to look at. And, you know, I think that you can say, hey, for our level, level ones, and this is broken up into three levels. So zero to 54 is level one, 55 to 64, 65 to 79, and so on and so forth, one to five. It looks like we're, you know, a comparison to the other five years, we have less level ones. And our level twos are, you know, kind of less, except that one, that one year in 2017. And we have all these level threes. But then if you look at level fives, we, this is the lowest year that we've had level fives. And you could say, whoa, well COVID, right? It's hard to say COVID because this is a reality for everyone. And they intentionally curve the Regents to make sure a specific number of students pass the Regents. That's what the state does. And so it's, it's really important to see that in a five year comparison, we actually had the lowest number of highest achieving kids, which is something that, you know, I just kind of talked about the level ones and making sure that we want to address level ones. We also want to make sure that we're addressing our highest achievers and providing enrichment opportunities and opportunities for them to continue to succeed and move as fast as they possibly can. I got an opportunity to observe a couple of classrooms in a pre-cut, pre-calc honors class. And boy, it was not a class that you wanted to go in without floaties on. It was, it was really high level stuff and students were going boom, boom, boom. Really amazing work. We want to make sure that we're encouraging those opportunities when we can for our highest achievers. So no, now how do we get there? One of the things that I have been kind of working on and putting together is what I call a K-12 mathematics roadmap. This is not something I'm sharing today, but it is something that I'm excited to share with you guys at some point in time. And it, it was birthed out of a conversation that I had in a, in a webinar that someone said, "So what's your math plan?" Well, I had all these things in my head, but I didn't necessarily have a math plan. And I was able to kind of put it on paper with some very specific levers as to what needed to move. And these are the five levers that, that kind of came out of that math plan and are the things that I live in almost every day. Build culture of respect and accountability. I'm going to come back to that at the end. Invest in and retain in teachers. So professional development, making sure that we're really investing in teachers. There's two different partnerships that Cabinet thought was important enough to, and you guys, when you did the budget for us to invest in our 512 teachers, one with University of Rochester, one with Syracuse University. I am, I am stoked about these two partnerships. I think that they're going to be amazing and provide really, really good work. Establish guaranteed and viable curriculum K-12. I think we, we're doing a great job at the K-7 level, at the 812 level. I think that we really need to look at it closely. And so OCM BOCES, we're contracting with them next year to do a full curriculum audit. And also next year, we're going to put together a committee that researches what curriculum resources are out there with the hope of then piloting the following year and implementation the following year after that. So a three year type of plan to try to really look closely at 812 curriculum. Expand math intervention and intervention and enrichment. We have already added Algebra Workshop at the junior high. Algebra Two Workshop is currently happening, which is a support class at CNS. Nothing was happening for support classes at the junior high. That now is going to be started, starting next year. We were able to shift a teacher from the high school to the junior high based on student to staff ratio. And that class will be in place for our algebra students to help support them in their achievement. We also, at the 57 level, are moving from a two out of every four intervention platform. So the students who receive intervention currently, we're receiving it only two out of every four days a week. Beginning next year, they're going to be receiving it four out of every four days a week. Therefore, we're going to be able to use the program that we currently have and see if, if we use it with fidelity and with integrity, if it actually does the work that we're wanting to see happen. And lastly, ensure instructional decisions are based on data and really be data driven in all of our decision making. I, I think that that is something that Cabinet, when I've gone to them and they've said, "Hey, Nick, where's the data on this?" It's really kind of charged me and kept my mind focused on, on, am I making decisions that are focused on data? But also at the classroom level, creating systems that help encourage that we're informing all of our instruction based on data. Finally, I wanted to get back to build culture of respect and accountability. This is, this is paramount to everything that we do, in my opinion. And that is that we build a place where teachers see me not as someone that is a top down, here's what you need to do, but they see me in the weeds. That's why both John and I were a part of a PLC all year that we attended. I attended fifth grade at Rocks. John Wojcik attended third grade at Rocks. And we did the work right along with them. It's why one of the first things that I tried to put into place was these recognition cards that say, "Making amazing teaching happen, math." And I try to get those out to as many teachers as possible, recognizing the great work that they're doing. Respect and accountability means that I'm respecting the amazing work that teachers do because Marzano says the two main things that increase student achievement are curriculum and teaching. That's what increases it. And so we have to make sure that we invest in teachers, creating that culture, starting with me and John, is where we need to make sure that that's happening. So just to explain that as clear as I possibly can. And then accountability, right? It, that's hard. That's accountability on me because this plan, the roadmap that I was just talking about, holds me really accountable to some things that I want to see happen. But it also means that if we're putting those things in place, that teachers recognize that there's some going to be accountability on them as well. So I talked, I kind of opened with, I, me thinking that this was a perfect time to get a chance to present to you guys. And that's because it's really important that everything, if, if I'm creating a roadmap for mathematics, it has to align to the strategic plan. Otherwise, it just feels like different plans out there. And so if you look at each of the focus areas, you build culture of respect and accountability that's directly in line with culture, cultural competency focus, invest in retaining teachers, that's almost direct, like word for word professional learning focus. Establish a guaranteed and viable curriculum K-12. So this is, in my opinion, in line with two different things. Student support system focus and a graduation rate goal. Expand math intervention enrichment. This is definitely in line with the student support system or the MTSS. And then ensure instructional decisions are based on data. I kind of think that you could probably apply this to almost every single one of them. But graduation rate, obviously, and then student support system focus. When Dr. Leahy was in a meeting with us recently for a BPT meeting, he asked, "What do you see as challenges?" When he presented the strategic action plan. And, and I said, "I think one of the challenges is how do I see myself if I'm a seventh grade math teacher in this plan?" Because if I just look at the cursory level, I don't see myself. I have to be intentional. And I believe it's my job as a director to, to show everyone in my department how they are seen in the strategic, strategic plan. Sorry, that's a really hard word for me today. So that is, that's why I think this slide is probably my most important slide that I would share with you today because everything that we do in math has to align to the strategic action plan. What are some early wins that have happened? And I've shared a couple of these already, but you know, I'm proud of these. These are things that have already happened since, since I've been in this position. We have benchmark alignment and participation at the grades, the grades that I shared with you about entering into Mastery Connect. Actually, at K-4, we had 96% of teachers all give the benchmark and enter it into Mastery Connect for the second, for the second trimester benchmark. We also are in alignment to that. And that's actually coming, the third one down. The K-7 math committee is going to be completely aligned to a data driven focus next year. So they already have been given the calendar for next year about what it's going to look like. And it's all going to be data driven focus, aligned specifically to the benchmarks that they're going to be given. So that it's not just a curriculum meeting, but that it's actually something that makes sense to them. And they can feel like I'm coming out of this committee with some tools to have conversations in my PLCs with my, with my peers. We created a, a system to ensure that teacher recommendations at North Syracuse and CNS were a little bit tighter. Those were somewhat loose and, and department chairs shared that with me. And so we created a system to ensure that that's not the case anymore. We've had some great data conversations around 57 AIS. I'm not sure if you guys are aware, but one of my second roles is to oversee 512 AIS, both math and ELA. And so I, you know, have had a lot of conversations with our 57 AIS team, and they did some really great stuff around data meetings and Ames Web. Probably one of the things so far that has been the loudest thing is changing the AIS platform at 57 from two out of every four days. I say two out of every four days a week. I, I want you to think of it as like an A, B, C, D cycle. So instead of two out of every four days in that cycle, to four out of every four days in that cycle, we worked really closely with AIS and the district steering team to make sure that that happened. We have a new class up at CNS called Choices and Chances. This has been something that Jamie Sullivan has been really adamant about trying to get some classes that have a little bit more contextual understanding around, you know, for, for kids that are math specific. So Choices and Chances is going to be taught next year. And we have another one that might be in the works around gaming, not, I'm sorry, not gaming like a video games, but actually sport games and the analytics behind sports. So think Moneyball, if you've ever seen Moneyball. Piloting curriculum. So we piloted a college algebra curriculum this year and next year, free of charge. It's actually an open source curriculum called Next Generation Personal Finance. It's an amazing curriculum up at the high school. That's really, really awesome. And all the teachers love it. So there, they were already using it this year. And I said, "Well, let's, let's get it in so that we can actually be doing the work." I had some amazing conversations and walkthroughs with principals that just helping support their instructional leadership and, and getting to go into classrooms. Teachers feeling open enough to having us come into those classrooms and do. I call them walkthroughs there. They were walkthroughs, but really just kind of getting a mathematics temperature in the building, and, and I thought it was, it was some really great things that kind of came out of that. John Wojcik has been doing some really great coaching with grades K-4, and we're, we have some plans to expand that out. Just, just overall stability maybe to me being in this position. I think that Greg was trying to juggle a lot when he stepped in, and I think John did an amazing job as well. But just having a focus that's completely math-specific has really allowed some of our department chairs to feel like, oh, wow, I, I have someone to go to, and some great support around that. Third and grade, third and fifth grade PLC inclusion, which I talked to you guys about, the Algebra Workshop, which I talked to you guys about, starting BOSI's contract to review curriculum, and then the partnerships with U of R and SU. And, and so that's where we're already moving, and that is all I have. So I would love to answer any questions that, that may come up.
I'll, I'll ask one more. Back, back on the, well, you don't have to.
I can turn.
Roll back to the early wins, but just something that jumped out at me. So what are your thoughts on, you have these AIS data committees? Or what do we got? 570 AIS data conversion, Ames Web, blah, blah, blah. 38 testing is what we have here. I'm assuming because of our configuration, it's a 57 committee. Just thoughts on that? Would we want eighth grade in that?
Yeah.
Would you want it?
Yeah.
Sorry.
No, it's okay. It's, it's really good. I'm really excited about some of the work that I have gotten a chance to start with eighth grade math. We had some difficult conversations, but that's what we do in education. We have some difficult conversations sometimes. But what came out of our most recent conversation was some work around common assessments and common benchmarks that what they're doing this summer is creating those common benchmarks and then also creating some checks for understanding that will then be embedded into, or they're actually gonna input into Mastery Connect. And what that's gonna do by inputting them into Mastery Connect is it's going to instantly engage us in conversations around the data that they're working through. They also, so some of the work, you spoke specifically to Ames, so that's Mastery Connect, which is the curriculum side of things, their, their actual content. Ames Web is, is a screener. And so Ames Web at, after seventh grade becomes a little bit unique in the way that it's used. Because if we can't, Ames Web provides opportunities for us to put kids in AIS, if they're not reading, to get them to read. If they are struggling in math, to really support them in math. When they make it to the junior high, and that's why it's so critical that we make sure that if a kid isn't reading in fifth grade, that we're giving them everything that they possibly can. Because the second that they make it to the junior high, the, the, the style of it changes, the, the way that we do AIS changes a little bit. Because AIS becomes, let's make sure that we get through the regions. If I fail the regions, that is the data marker to be putting, to being put in AIS. Now, in eighth grade, that's not necessarily the case. We started a ninth grade workshop this year. What I'd really like to see is an eighth grade workshop as well. So AIS becomes eighth grade workshop, which supports still our lowest level kids. It could probably be similar students, but really trying to help support them with that. But I, I think that the data piece around eighth grade is the Mastery Connect and, and getting, getting that alignment. Ames Web, although I think helps them see a screening tool for their kids and specifically helps them see growth, which is what we talked about. It doesn't inform and drive instruction, and that's the thing that I'm most concerned or interested in right now.
Thank you.
Other questions? Just real quick. I'm glad we're doing an audit on our curriculum. Is that a new coaster through BOSI's, or is that something that they've offered in the past?
The Greg Stone actually gave me the name of Lynn Radicello. She has done this for us before. She did an ELA audit before he started, either it was a 58 or a K-4. I think it's actually K-4 before he started all the stuff that he originally did. So it was his first step, and, and he said, hey, reach out to this person. I had some great conversations with her and Chris Leacy, who oversees, and, and it was, it was good stuff. So I'm, I'm excited about that. We're gonna be interviewing 20 different people. So that includes administrators, it includes teachers, it includes everyone that's involved in 812 curriculum, or 812 mathematics.
Always great to take advantage of those, those coasters and those partnerships when we can. They're always coming up with new ones, so I didn't know if this was.
Yeah, no, great. Thank you.
Do you have a question, Dr. Kramer?
Yeah, I have a question. Great job on the presentation. Very informative. Thank you. When you say guaranteed and viable curriculum, I wonder, do you have a curriculum in mind from your math experience? Will you be looking at districts with our similar demographics and see if they're scoring higher than what we're, we're scoring? Maybe look at that. Is that something that BOSI's is gonna help navigate? And then the second part of the question is, are you looking at curriculum 57? Then I think I heard that the teachers make their own curriculum from eighth grade on? Clarify that for me.
Yeah.
Please.
So I answer the second question first, because the first question has many more heads to it. The first question is, or the second question you asked about 57. Currently, we have a K-7 curricular resource called Into Math that we use fully. And, and that's what we will continue to use. We actually have that for two more years. And at this time, even though this isn't, I'm making it public knowledge if I say it. I have no intentions on changing that curriculum. I think what it's doing is really good, even though I wasn't the one that quote brought it in. I think it, it does all the things that we want it to do to really provide the, the best level instruction for our students. So that's K-7, and that will stay K-7. Eighth grade is kind of that funky, funky thing that they're not a Regents class, but they're existing at the junior high. So they feel a little bit like high school, like a high school teacher and with high school students. But, you know, trying to kind of figure out either, are you gonna be with the, with the high school? Or are you going to be at K-7? Because they weren't on the original K-7 pilot, the decision has been made to include them with the high school. So they will be a part of the high school. In terms of the question that you asked about, do you have something in mind? Yeah, I have, I have some things in mind, but that's, that's not how we do work. And that's not how people buy into things. The way that I would approach it is, I have, if you walked into my office right now, there's a Post-it note, one of the big, huge Post-it, poster boards with nine different curriculums on it. Each time I found a different one, I wrote it up there that I thought was quality enough to go up on that board. And those nine are on there. And when we create the committee to start looking at those curriculums, those nine will go onto the table, and we'll get all the reps to come and, and listen. And then we will go through the process, just like the policy says, to identify two or three that we think are of the highest quality. And that will be a committee decision. It won't be my decision. It's something that I, there has to be the teachers and myself and John going, moving together to really make a, an informed decision.
Thank you. I wanna add one little tidbit, and this comes from my background of, I used to be a secondary educator, and then as a parent, a lot of times I see in eighth grade, before they get onto that track of the higher classes going in, like, you know, you take the Regents math in eighth grade, and then that sets you up for the next class. It puts you in a certain track. And I noticed, I noticed that it happened here years ago when my kids went here. I noticed that it happened here. I noticed that it happened in the district that I worked in. And it's just a, just a bugaboo of mine, just to have way back in the mind, because you have so many things going on. But I noticed that they would, especially with the eighth grade classes, they would over-schedule, like maybe have like 38 kids, because they know, they know that, you know, eight or nine are going to drop out. And I, I, it was funny, because when that was presented to me as a parent, like often I would be sitting in the other side with the teacher saying, we've tried this, we've tried this. And, you know, they're stressed out, maybe let's try something. And then when I was on the other side of it as a parent, I, I was like, no, what have we done? No, I'm gonna, we're gonna get tutoring. She's gonna have groups, and we're gonna do the success story. She ended up getting like the second highest grade at the, you know, and the, on the final, on the Regents. And the teacher said she needs to be pushed. I said, absolutely. So just way in back of your mind, just to be cognizant of that.
I, I think that when you look at that, that Regents graph, where we don't have enough of our students scoring at that highest level, I think that you could consider that one of the factors that may be going into it. And I have not heard that. I actually think that Ms. Terose over at the junior high is very mindful of making sure that who is in advanced courses should be. And so she really thinks through that and really is trying to make sure that she's doing that and not over-scheduling them. But I appreciate that, that thought, and I think it's, I think it's important. I also think it's important that we're not just advancing kids in seventh grade and then never having a shot for other kids to make it in there. That's something that I have talked to eighth grade about, that if kids come out of seventh grade or even eighth grade, really, really doing well, can they, how do they make it into an honors track if they have proven that they deserve to be there? That is problematic. It's harder, but just because it's harder doesn't mean it can't be done.
I just want to let the board know and thank the board, because it's because of your trust. We have a Director of Math and able to attract Nick to the district. Some of the other things that we're gonna be looking at, when he says all, he means all. And some of the focus areas, we, we know, we need to make sure we have more girls going into, in loving math, because at that seventh and eighth grade level, there are things that happen there. Students of color, our students with disability. We want to make sure we are challenging all of our students to make sure that we raise the bar for all of our students. And I'm going to be asking each director, as you've seen, to come do things similar to what Nick is doing in this summer so that you know what's happening, challenges, initiatives, all the different nuances within the different content areas. So thank you.
Thank you. I didn't have any questions, but Mr. President, during the presentation, I had comments, but now I have questions for Nicholas. Do most of our students take Algebra I? What would you say the percentage of our students that take Algebra I in the school district?
In ninth grade? So 100% of kids take Algebra I?
Okay. I'm just keeping track of this.
Well, it might not be 100. There, if you're, if you're ungraded, you wouldn't be taking Algebra I, but that would be the only student.
Majority of our students in this school district.
Yes.
Some take it in eighth grade.
Correct.
Some take it ninth grade. All right. If I am correct on this, a few years back with Amy Frilati, they decided not to do geometry in between Algebra I and Algebra II. Majority of our kids go from Algebra I to Algebra II before geometry?
Majority.
Okay.
Not all.
Not all. Now I think this percentage will decrease a little bit. How many for Algebra II? What do you think? 50%, 60%?
No, for Algebra II, you're probably, the number of kids in our district that take Algebra II, it's probably closer to 90.
And then finally.
85 to 90. Geometry's probably 75 to 80.
Wow. I, I was not thinking you were gonna send those to me, but that's great. You mentioned AIS, so now I have a little concern from my previous life in this district as a math person, like Mr. Wojcik. AIS, basically five through 12 is under your leadership, and it's based probably on Regents, and whoever gets in the program, it's based on the task they take. Am I correct?
Sure. AIS, decisions on AIS have to actually be based on two markers, two data points you have to have. You can't just do it on one data point. So usually at the 57 level, it is Ames Web and a, and a report card grade or a teacher recommendation. At the 912 level, it is based on teacher recommendation and a Regents, failing a Regents. Right now with the safety net, AIS is, we're doing some different things with.
Deal with you. Now we're gonna go to Mr. Bowles on this, because I, who is in charge of AIS K through four? Our Director of Elementary Ed? In this district, this is where we've made, I feel, a mistake, and this is my own opinion, because I worked with grades three through five, and I pushed for K to two. They always told me, my, my leaders would say, Bob, we've got, you can't reach them then. I know that you're doing it because we're going down to kindergarten now. But I would feel a math person should be in charge of AIS. And the reasoning is, and, and this goes to Jason too, is that we hire reading teachers to do AIS in those grade levels. It should be, there should be teachers that are strong in math that are doing that. And I feel, Beth knows this, that that's where it starts, K-1 and 2. And I really feel that there should be math people, not reading people, working with those people. That's just my opinion. You can take it for what you want. And then my other thing I want to say, and it really doesn't deal with you in that, but I'm gonna end up with you, okay? Is that, yes, we need to see social studies here, and we need to see science K through 12. We see all the elementary schools every year and what they're doing. And thank you for Nick for coming, the Director of Elementary Ed. But we need to look at other subjects and where they're going. So I think that's.
It's already on the schedule.
Already told me. Now my comments, which I had already written up.
Can, can I respond to one of them before you give your comments?
Go ahead.
So it sounds like you just want to give me more work, so that's great. And thank you, Mr. Crabtree. No. Just gonna laugh a little bit.
To be honest, there should be more John Wojciks, and there were in this district.
Here's, here's the great thing. Greg Stone and I work very closely together. And when we talked about who was going to do this, instead of one of us being just math and one of us being just AIS or just ELA, it didn't make sense. Those K-4 teachers are, you know, can be both. And like you said, we hire reading teachers. But an example, can I just share a teacher's name? That's not a bad thing, right? No? Okay, so there's a teacher at Gillette Road who is reading certified. However, she teaches math, loves math, wants to stay in math. And so there are teachers who, just because they're reading certified, doesn't mean that they don't absolutely love math. So it's not.
I didn't mean to say it that way, but the majority.
Yeah. It's not a solvall. I'm just saying there, there are some teachers.
I've worked in those programs, and I know a lot of the AIS teachers, and they are, they have reading.
Yeah.
But they don't have math.
Yeah, okay.
Mom, I take, change some of my comments now.
I want to get in on this.
Okay. So things that you brought up that are very strong are enrichment. We need to do more in this district in enrichment. That's where other school districts go up on that scale. It's not just the AIS, but it's moving those threes up to fours and the twos up to threes. That's where we gotta do, do some work. So I'm glad you've got that in there. Shared decision-making, I love it. Math committee. So you hear everybody, and their ideas from each of the buildings come to that. And you meet what? Once a month? Once, once a month. Keep that going. Curriculum development, that is the key, and you brought that out. That is the key to a successful math program. I worked on math curriculum for many, many years. I shared one with you, the old-time math curriculum. I do want it back. But anyway, anyway, and you make up a good team with John Wojcik. But again, we don't have enough math people at the elementary level. When I was doing it back in the 70s and 80s, there were four of us. Math to me is just as important as reading. And then I want to thank you for your presentation, and I want to say, I'm hoping somebody is at home watching. I contacted her last night, and that's Mary Scanlon. Mary Scanlon was on this board for nine years, and from her very first day on the board, math was something. Mary Scanlon was on this board for nine years, and from her very first day on the board, math was the something, and I've already talked to you about this. And I'm hoping you're watching because she's got to be jumping up and down where we're going with our math program. You only have an understanding of how our students can learn and be successful in math. But you understand behaviors of students because of your building experience. Most of the directors don't have that. I'm very excited that you have children and students right there along with the curriculum and the teachers. That makes me really excited. And that's about it, Nick. You can see I asked a lot of questions. They have a lot of comments, and I have some gear to the superintendent.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I think that's it, but I want to thank you for the, it was a great presentation. And I think as evidenced by the questions that Bob didn't have any before, has some after, and you still, you stimulate a lot of thought and you I have to say, very thorough, easy to understand answers to the questions. Thank you. And it's my understanding we do not have comments from the audience, so I'll move on to our board committee reports, which you do not have, and we will be doing the committee appointments shortly for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. So I'm going to move right into superintendent's comments.
And we've been moving ahead with all of our summer programs. Um, we've had some challenges with weather. It's been quite hot. So there have been times we've had to make adjustments, but uh all has gone well. You've seen that we've made some repairs uh due to some, an issue uh at Smith Road uh with the water main break. All of those things uh have have been rectified, but I I did want to make sure, again, not only the directors, but uh other program or people that are in charge of programs. We want to make sure we put in front of you so that you can see everything and have a full understanding. And again, that helps with anyone that may be concerned with transparency. The only other things that I I have is that uh there's a lot of PD happening this summer. You'll see cars in the parking lot, teachers are are working this summer. And I I walked a teacher down to Mr. Scholl's room because she was excited and she was asking about doing some curriculum work. And um he he had it all set for her and she was raring to go. So um there's a lot of good work happening and this uh will, if uh, I think we're going to have Mr. London at some point uh do a PD report. But it'll be at the tail end so that you can get the full complement of what happened this summer. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Superintendent Bowles. We have Board of Education comments, of which I have a few. Uh, want me to do that? Just just to point out that I, at your place setting, you would have found a summary I wrote. I went to the New York State School Boards Association Summer Law Conference. So I just, it's just a thing I do, no big deal, but I thought I'd summarize it and provide you with a couple pages. I do have detailed uh information if somebody's really wants to uh see, but I thought I'd give you that summary. Since I sat in front of lawyer, lawyers are not always the best presenters. Some are very good. But some read to you. I did want to point one thing out, though, because I just saw this great math presentation and something we talked about was teacher shortage, and there's a couple of points that are in the math presentation that were in the teacher shortage piece, and that was talking about strategies for retention, because recruitment's going to be a real issue. Uh, there's a lot of concern. The districts will be getting into price wars almost. So it's it's taking a look at, and the words I saw in this presentation were in the same thing at the NISBA, talking about investing, investing in your current staff. Pathways for growth and and things like that, and they referenced culture and climate, which I thought was interesting. So we're in tune here. Thank you. And uh also you'll see uh the committee appointments that will be on the agenda, down to discussion action items that should be at your place. So thank you. Did you have comments?
No, I obviously have comments.
Well.
And boy, I'm going to be giving Mr. Bowles maybe, and Dr. Leahy some homework here. I know we're adding some positions tonight, which is just making me feel excited. I do not have a hold on the following three, and I'm sure this information can be given to us in next week's Friday letter. I'm not sure of the number of consulting teachers in this district. I am not sure uh coming up for the next year, the number of teachers on special assignment. And I believe the third one is instructional specialist. Not only would I like to know the number of them, but what is the job description? I just need to have a couple of sentences maybe about um the job descriptions and what these people are doing. They're all important. They're all important and I, you know, how many you want, but I just want to have a feel of how many. Well, now I'm going to talk about something I said. I'm going to talk about every board meeting, and that's Sandy Di Bianco, our former board member for over two decades, and I want to thank Beth, and I also want to thank Terry for their comments, because they were excellent comments about what we should be doing. Uh, I met with Jen. Uh, she's not only Sandy's daughter, but she's a friend of mine, so we had a really good conversation. We laughed, we cried. She thought our ideas were wonderful and she would like us to do something in memory of her mother. So I don't know, Mr. President, if we have to do some kind of policy here. I'm naming um a part library, and I thought Terry's idea was good. There's a part of the library, when you guys go for the for the tour, where they have cushion seats with the books, that would be wonderful. So um I don't know where we're going to go with it. But I think I'm getting good vibes from this board that we want to do something. Uh, I thought Matt Irwin's idea was good, that after the students develop this program, that we have this artist do it for us. So I just want to bring it up. I'm hoping that we move forward on it.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Just my my comments on that. I mean, I I got to say this correctly. Uh, I I mean, I don't have any problem with this. I'm I'm well aware of who Sandy was and her contributions to this district. So I don't know how we move forward, but I don't have a problem at all. I I support moving forward on this issue. My concern as a board member is looking forward. I don't want to hold this up and make a policy. We can do that afterwards, but I think we need a process. I'll use that instead of the word policy.
Okay.
A process for this going forward. Just so it's, I don't, I don't, I don't want to say anymore than that, just so we have a process. Did I say the word process enough? I I just think that's important, uh, an application, something along those lines. Again, I think most people here know who she was, what she contributed. I don't have a problem. I just want to make sure we have some kind of policy that has a process to it. I'd like to look at that. I'd like to have legal look at that, but I think maybe our policy committee and our policy service we have might be able to provide us resources on what is out there. And if there's nothing out there, it's my understanding, it was looked at that we could develop our own, just so we have something. And I hate to use the word committee, so I'll just say task force, you know, something down down the road where applications might come into a group to to screen that, if that makes any sense. So those are just my thoughts right now. How we move forward on this particular one, I'm certainly open. Uh, you got the ball rolling, obviously. Um, it sounds like something is very appropriate. It seems simple and doable. I don't know where we go right now. Um, so.
All right, and my next item, and I've talked to Paul about all of these, is the having a student join this Board of Education as a non-voting, and um I thought it would take a long time. But I I talked to Paul about this, I texted him today, is that once we come up with a policy or a procedure, I think you say the same thing about this one, that it's if we want letters of recommendation, if they have to be on the superintendent's committee or legislative committee, to have to be a senior, we come up with a criteria. But we turn it over to the high school. Then it is out of our hands. And Ms. Sullivan and her group would choose the student. So I feel, I was thinking like middle of the year, like I I think we can move forward on this. If we can decide on the criteria and turn that over to Jamie, um, we could have somebody join. And as Dan has said, there is a student on it, J D, there is a student on it, Bonsville, I don't know about Liverpool. You might know, our lawyer might know other schools, and that is all.
Okay, thank you. Any other board comments? Okay. I will move on to routine action items. I'm looking for a motion for A, the consideration of approval of minutes of the organizational meeting of July eleventh, two thousand and two. Motion from Dr. Kramer, second from Mr. Moody Wuzik.
I need to add.
That is before us, yes.
Jill, I'm sorry I didn't call you today, but in the the part with the um comments of uh, I didn't say a hundred and eighty students to summer school, it's eighteen hundred, one thousand, just another zero. So, you know, a big difference between a hundred and eighty students in central New York going to summer school and eighteen hundred.
We can consider a friendly amendment from the author that.
I apologize, Jill.
That that's allowed in Robert's rules as a friendly amendment, so. And the other discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, pose that is carried. I get a motion, please replace B and C together. Motion from Dr. Kramer, second from Mr. Segru. I did that without even thinking. I like that. Proud of myself. All right, we'll get that in a minute. So we have the um consideration of the placement of preschool disabled students in consideration, the classification placement of students at home instruction by the appropriate committees. That is before us. No dis, seen any discussion, all in favor. Pose that is carried. Motion, please, for the appointment of twenty-two, twenty-three Board of Education committees. Motion from Mr. Marizio, second from Mr. Moody Wuzik. So you have those before you. You find the, you'll find the list also at your place mat in a hard copy. I hope everybody's pleased. Basically, everybody did receive their first choice for at least one of the committees. Some of you are being requested to serve on more than one. So that is before us. Are there any questions, concerns, comments? Okay, seeing none, all in favor. Pose, thank you very much. That is carried. Item B and C and D, I would like to group together if I get a motion for that. Motion from Dr. Kramer, second from Mr. Crabtree. Here we have the creation of one point O F T E, teacher on special assignment. Two point O F T elementary teachers and the one point O full-time equivalent teacher on special assignment for civic readiness coordinator. And you read about those in the Friday letter. Those three are before us. Any questions?
I want to make a comment. I want to thank Dan. I know I'm pushing on this too. But Carl W. Siley, Bear Road Elementary School, needs these two teachers uh in C because of class size. And again, I want to thank Beth Kramer for her comments at our last meeting, and I I just feel that fourth grade was way too uh large enrollment and kindergarten. I have no problem with eighteen point five, because it'll go up to twenty, believe me. And I do know there's a wheelchair child in that class, so thank you. And I'm sure you and our friend, Mr. Leahy, will be watching the numbers uh as we get closer, but thank you. Thank you, because small class size makes a difference. Thank you.
Okay, that is before us. Seeing no other comments, all in favor. Pose that is carry. Item E, acknowledgement of gifts and a, I'm sorry, I want a motion for that, please. Motion from Dr. Kramer, second from Mr. Marizio. That's before us. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Pose that is carried. Retirement acknowledgements, we have three today. We have Tracy Fleming, speech therapist retiring with twenty-four point five years of service. Kristen Combe, music teacher retiring with twenty-nine years of service, and Clayton Edmund, custodial worker one, retiring with six point nine years of service. So I want to thank those for their service and wish them a happy, healthy retirement. Some of those are down the road, so we don't have to worry about that quite yet. And motion, please, for G, declaration of marketable and non-markable goods. Motion, Mr. Crabtree, second from Dr. Kramer. There's quite a list before us. Yeah, lots of uh Chromebooks, Chromebooks, yeah. I was going to count them, but then I decided, no, what was I going to do that for? So.
I'd just like to make another comment. I want to thank Jason, because I'm sure that came from our technology, that it was typewritten.
I noticed.
I think Mr. Nicholas, our math person, put some things in there, and it's typewritten. I appreciate other people. I'll just keep saying that. Maybe they're listening to us, because some of it is like doctor signatures.
I did. On it, and we actually developed a form and circulated it, and uh, you know, we'll, we'll keep buttoning this up.
I did notice some of the handwritten was handwritten neatly at this time, so I did, I did point, I did make a note of that, so. So that is before us. Seeing no other comments, all in favor. Pose that's carried. Thank you. Instructional personnel, A, please give me a motion, put that before us. Motion from Ms. Segru, second from Dr. Kramer. Any discussion there?
I want to thank Mr. Jason, our director of community relations. He always puts down Carl W. Siley, Bear Road Elementary. Makes me feel good, Jason. Thank you.
Okay, noted. Any other comments? Seeing none, all in favor. Pose that is carried. Support staff personnel report B, acceptance of that. A motion, please. Motion from Dr. Kramer, second from Mr. Herman. Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor. Pose that is carried. An administrative personnel report C. Motion from Dr. Kramer, second from Ms. Segru. Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor. Pose, and that is carried. So I will make a motion for executive session. I'll ask for a second. The motion is to move into executive session for the purpose of reviewing the employment record of one individual with no action to follow. Interviewed to review two legal items with no action to follow. If I can get a second. Second from Mr. Marizio. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Pose that is carried. And a motion for adjournment. Motion from Mr. Marizio, second from Mr. Moody Wuzik. Any discussion? All in favor. Pose. We are adjourned, seven oh five, maybe six.